Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the January 8th, 2025, Meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We're happy and delighted to have each of you here with us. Madam Clerk, may we please have a roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Henry.
Present.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Paris.
Here.
Commissioner Strickland.
Here.
Commissioner May.
Here.
Commissioner Cantu.
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry.
Here.
Now I have the invocation, which will be led by Commissioner Henry, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Commissioner May. Please rise for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Gracious Father, we thank you for this opportunity. We thank you for this opportunity to gather once again. We thank you, Heavenly Father, for all of us who made it into 2025. We pray for those who may have lost someone who didn't make it to 2025. We ask and pray, Heavenly Father, that you guide us, bless us, continue to help us grow, continue to help us grow as a city. Continue, Heavenly Father, to keep the enemy away, those who will cause harm or say harmful things about the work that we're trying to do here in this good city of Daytona Beach. We ask and pray, Heavenly Father, that you put a hold on their tongues, put some love in their hearts, put some kindness in their hearts, and give them a kind spirit, that they will see that we are here for all people, everyone, not just one certain group of people. This is the prayer I pray, in your son Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now move on to item number 4A, Approval of the Minutes of the December 4, 2024 City Commission Meeting. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero. This time, we will have our agenda approval. If there are any changes, our city manager will address them.
Yes, Honorable Mayor Commissioners, as you are aware, I sent you an email in reference to the Bike Week, Biketoberfest master plan, that it was going to be removed in reference to the removal of item 11A. This will be brought back to you all with requesting a date for a workshop, as well as we will be scheduling a community meeting before the workshop comes to you. So we're removing item 11A to a later date.
I move to accept the agenda with the said change.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions or comments? Here are none. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Okay, we're going to move on to our presentation. We have a proclamation for Human Trafficking Awareness Day presented to Tammy Woden, the victim advocate for the Daytona Beach Police Department, and Mayor Henry to present.
The city of Daytona Beach, world's most famous beach, in recognition of Human Trafficking Awareness Day. Whereas human trafficking is the recruitment harboring, transportation provision, or obtaining of a person for labor or service through the use of force, fraud, or coercion, for the purpose of forced labor or sexual servitude. And whereas human trafficking is a $32 billion a year global criminal enterprise, and is a crime as well as a civil and human rights violation, and an estimated 25 million people are currently victims of human trafficking for both sex and labor. And whereas human trafficking is a nationwide public health and civil rights crisis, its victims and survivors are everywhere, with the Daytona Beach being no exception. Whereas all communities must seek to prevent human trafficking before it can occur by promoting safe, healthy, and supportive environments. Whereas Daytona Beach, Florida is a vibrant city, home to over 80,000 residents, and hosts over 8 million guests, who have the right to hope, freedom, economic security, safety, and the pursuit of happiness. And now, therefore, I Derrick L. Henry, Mayor of the city of Daytona Beach, and on behalf of the City Commission, do proclaim Thursday, January 11, 2025, as Human Trafficking Awareness Day in the city of Daytona Beach. And I urge our citizens to support efforts to end human trafficking.
Yes.
We're going to move on to item 7, which is our citizen comment period. During this time, citizens have the opportunity to address the City Commission on any item on the consent agenda. And our first speaker is John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. I only have one area. It's 8H, the stairs that are going on the boardwalk. We've had problems since Jim decided to redo the boardwalk 15, 20 years ago. The pavers, the railings, and especially the steps. We had 52 steps going down to the beach. He wanted three. Three in 1,500 feet is just not enough, all right? Then he decided to put in the breakaways. In other words, when there's a storm, all the steps go away. So our tourists can't get down to the beach for five, six, eight months until we put it back in. Not a wise decision. The last one we put in was the metal ones. Then they put the steps, the rungs, that pop out. So every storm, the water would come in, they would pop out, and then we would end up with the 13 steps, only two are usable, all right? David was looking into having the old steps, because the foundations were still there, putting back in the cement ones, which lasted for 60 years, rather than having them replaced every year and every storm. So what are we doing? Are we going to have the breakaways? We will lose all of them every storm? Are we going to have the metal ones, where the steps go away every storm? Or are we going to have the cement ones? I'm asking you to look at it, because we make money off the tourists. The idea of screwing them every time we can do it is not a smart decision. So let's look at the idea of keeping our tourist happy. There are over 2,000 hotel rooms attached to that boardwalk. It is important to us. Thank you.
That was my only speaker, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we have a motion to approve, Senator.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have any other questions or comments regarding this?
Um, Mayor.
Yes, Mayor.
I do.
Okay.
Item 8D was one of my welcome signs that was damaged, and the insurance is paying $4,661. Instead of going back into my fund, I would like that transferred over to Public Works.
Transfer it over to Public Works?
Yes.
Oh.
It was out of my opera funds. I'm donating it.
You're donating it to our Public Works?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Our budget officer will make sure that the funds that come back in will be transferred into the Public Works account.
So in other words, a sign that you built doesn't work. You had constructed, was destroyed, but you don't want to fix the sign?
It's not going to work there in DOT. It's...
It's given a hard time?
Yeah.
Okay, got you. All right, do we have to say anything else to that? Or is that, that's all noted? Okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second for the consent agenda. Any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number 9, which is our public hearings and quasi-judicial hearings. Item 9A, City Attorney's Office repealing ordinances 2023-268, which established the current zone boundaries for the City Commission. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance repealing ordinance number 2023-268, amending Subpart 8, Article 2, Section 2 of the City Charter, which amended the boundaries of the existing City Commission members' districts within the city of Daytona Beach, Volusia County, Florida, previously established by ordinance number 12-23, requiring a new redistricting plan to be adopted for the next regular municipal election in 2026, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments regarding this?
Um, Mayor.
Yes, Mayor.
I do.
Okay.
Item 8D was one of my welcome signs that was damaged, and the insurance is paying $4,661. Instead of going back into my fund, I would like that transferred over to Public Works.
Transfer it over to Public Works?
Yes.
Oh.
It was out of my opera funds. I'm donating it.
You're donating it to our Public Works?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Our budget officer will make sure that the funds that come back in will be transferred into the Public Works account.
So in other words, a sign that you built doesn't work. You had constructed, was destroyed, but you don't want to fix the sign?
It's not going to work there in DOT. It's...
It's given a hard time?
Yeah.
Okay, got you. All right, do we have to say anything else to that? Or is that, that's all noted? Okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second for the consent agenda. Any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number 9, which is our public hearings and quasi-judicial hearings. Item 9A, City Attorney's Office repealing ordinances 2023-268, which established the current zone boundaries for the City Commission. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance repealing ordinance number 2023-268, amending Subpart 8, Article 2, Section 2 of the City Charter, which amended the boundaries of the existing City Commission members' districts within the city of Daytona Beach, Volusia County, Florida, previously established by ordinance number 12-23, requiring a new redistricting plan to be adopted for the next regular municipal election in 2026, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments?
Yes, is this, what was this, on 10A?
9A.
Where are we? 9A. No, sorry. I'm fine.
I have one speaker, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Mr. John Nicholson.
I had a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
When will we decide, when will we decide who we're hiring to do this the second time? And when will, when will that be? What's the timeframe of it, is what I'm asking?
Okay. Do you have a time?
I don't know the answer to that. I looked in the packet. I didn't see that. I do have David Russell as our attorney handling. I don't know if he would have that answer. If he does, I'll ask him to come forward. Thank you.
Assistant City Attorney David Russell, the timeframe in which we would enact an extra districting plan, we haven't ironed it out, other than to say that it would have to be done before the next general election. We need to have a new consultant brought on board, which would be an item that would be brought before you to decide on as soon as the repeal goes through, if it goes through. If it's accepted today, the next step would be to file a motion with the court to dismiss the lawsuit as moot in light of the repeal. And then at that point, we'd look into hiring a new consultant to redo the process.
All right.
Thank you, David.
Okay. All right, Mr. Nicholson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. I've talked on this for a number of times. To get you to realize that, when you pass this, we're going back 17 years and using the numbers from 17 years ago for our zones, and we will keep them for 17 years. It doesn't make sense to use the numbers and the zones in this day and age from 2010. If you don't change it until the next election, that's 2026, that's 17-year stretch using the old zones from 2010. It only takes an hour to rezone. That's what Ormond did. That's what South Daytona did. That's what DeBarry did in 2010. It took them an hour. In 2010, it took us five hours to racially move people around our city, which is now considered illegal. But it took us five hours to move two black people from Seneca into Scarlet Golden Zone, because she wanted them, but she didn't want any white people. Because they wanted 1,000, Charles Cherry wanted 1,000 black people in all the white zones in order to be diversifying our zones. In this day and age, you can't use race specifically.
He's talking about this issue.
I'm talking about this issue. If we don't change it for two more years, 2026, it'll be 17 years, and you will base it, from what I'm told, on the 2020 numbers. The 2020 numbers will be off by almost 30,000, if not more. So you cannot use the 2020 numbers, because the whole idea is to have equal zones. If you have Zone 4 with 30,000 people, and 10 Zone with 11,000 people, that is not equal. So the whole idea of rezoning is not the date of the census. It's the quality of the zones. And if we have 90,000 people in the city, it should be 15,000 in each zone, which is relatively easy to do. Thank you.
For a bit of context, John is giving some contextual or historical data to a commission that was seated about 20 years ago. We can't verify the veracity of anything that he said, but he's entitled to say it. But I don't want people to think that it was related to anything that we're currently doing, or as it relates to racial gerrymandering. Okay, is that our only speaker?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number 9, which is our public hearings and quasi-judicial hearings. Item 9A, City Attorney's Office repealing ordinances 2023-268, which established the current zone boundaries for the City Commission. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance repealing ordinance number 2023-268, amending Subpart 8, Article 2, Section 2 of the City Charter, which amended the boundaries of the existing City Commission members' districts within the city of Daytona Beach, Volusia County, Florida, previously established by ordinance number 12-23, requiring a new redistricting plan to be adopted for the next regular municipal election in 2026, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments?
Yes, is this, what was this, on 10A?
9A.
Where are we? 9A. No, sorry. I'm fine.
I have one speaker, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Mr. John Nicholson.
I had a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
When will we decide, when will we decide who we're hiring to do this the second time? And when will, when will that be? What's the timeframe of it, is what I'm asking?
Okay. Do you have a time?
I don't know the answer to that. I looked in the packet. I didn't see that. I do have David Russell as our attorney handling. I don't know if he would have that answer. If he does, I'll ask him to come forward. Thank you.
Assistant City Attorney David Russell, the timeframe in which we would enact an extra districting plan, we haven't ironed it out, other than to say that it would have to be done before the next general election. We need to have a new consultant brought on board, which would be an item that would be brought before you to decide on as soon as the repeal goes through, if it goes through. If it's accepted today, the next step would be to file a motion with the court to dismiss the lawsuit as moot in light of the repeal. And then at that point, we'd look into hiring a new consultant to redo the process.
All right.
Thank you, David.
Okay. All right, Mr. Nicholson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. I've talked on this for a number of times. To get you to realize that, when you pass this, we're going back 17 years and using the numbers from 17 years ago for our zones, and we will keep them for 17 years. It doesn't make sense to use the numbers and the zones in this day and age from 2010. If you don't change it until the next election, that's 2026, that's 17-year stretch using the old zones from 2010. It only takes an hour to rezone. That's what Ormond did. That's what South Daytona did. That's what DeBarry did in 2010. It took them an hour. In 2010, it took us five hours to racially move people around our city, which is now considered illegal. But it took us five hours to move two black people from Seneca into Scarlet Golden Zone, because she wanted them, but she didn't want any white people. Because they wanted 1,000, Charles Cherry wanted 1,000 black people in all the white zones in order to be diversifying our zones. In this day and age, you can't use race specifically.
He's talking about this issue.
I'm talking about this issue. If we don't change it for two more years, 2026, it'll be 17 years, and you will base it, from what I'm told, on the 2020 numbers. The 2020 numbers will be off by almost 30,000, if not more. So you cannot use the 2020 numbers, because the whole idea is to have equal zones. If you have Zone 4 with 30,000 people, and 10 Zone with 11,000 people, that is not equal. So the whole idea of rezoning is not the date of the census. It's the quality of the zones. And if we have 90,000 people in the city, it should be 15,000 in each zone, which is relatively easy to do. Thank you.
For a bit of context, John is giving some contextual or historical data to a commission that was seated about 20 years ago. We can't verify the veracity of anything that he said, but he's entitled to say it. But I don't want people to think that it was related to anything that we're currently doing, or as it relates to racial gerrymandering. Okay, is that our only speaker?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Ken, do you have some questions?
I have one question.
No further questions? All right, we have a motion and a second.
I have a question. Mr. Jackson, am I correct, when you're redistricting, you have to go by the last census? So that would be 2020, correct?
I would refer again to Mr. Russell, only because I have not had an opportunity to preview that.
David Russell, Assistant City Attorney. That's correct, Commissioner. You would need to rely on the census data from 2020. There are, there is other data available potentially that could be used. However, it doesn't provide the same specificity as it relates to demographics, so it can create other issues pertaining to compliance with all other legal requirements, such as the Voting Rights Act, et cetera. And so typically, the data that would be used would be the census data. But that's an issue that can be worked out with the consultant, and the decision could be made from a policy perspective at that point.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
Okay, we are going to move on to item 9B, which is Public Works Approval of a Final Platte for Cornerstone Exchange. This is a resolution, public hearing, a resolution approving the final plat for Cornerstone Office Park, or Replat 3, a subdivision on 22.71 plus or minus acres of land located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Williamson Boulevard and LPGA Boulevard, authorizing the city manager to sign the final plat and permit recordation thereof upon meeting certain conditions precedent and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any speakers?
I do not have any speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have any questions? All right. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
No.
Motion carries, six one.
Okay, we are going to move on to item 9C, which is Public Works Approval of a Preliminary and Final Platte for Halifax Town Homes. It's a resolution, public hearing, a resolution approving the Preliminary and Final Platte for Halifax Town Homes, a subdivision on 39.44 plus or minus acres of land located on the west side of Clyde Morris Boulevard, immediately south of the new Cornerstone Boulevard section, authorizing the city manager to sign the final plat and permit recordation thereof upon meeting certain conditions precedence and providing an effective date.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions?
I have no speakers, Mr. Mayor.
No speakers, no questions. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
No.
Motion carries, six or one.
Okay, we're going to move on to item 9C, which is a Public Works Approval of Preliminary and Final Platte for Halifax Town Homes. Oh, sorry about that. So sorry. Okay, we're going to move on to the introduction of ordinances. Item number 10A, which is Growth Management and Planning Department Reserve at Strickland Small-Scale Comp Plan Amendment. It's an introduction of ordinance on first reading. An ordinance adopting a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment in accordance with Section 163.3187 Florida statutes, amending the future land use designation of 2.31 acres of property located at 1857 Strickland Range Road on the southeast corner of the intersection of Strickland Range Road and Clyde Morris Boulevard from office transition OT to mixed use MU, amending the future land use element, neighborhood cape development policy to allow for limited commercial development of the property, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict herewith and providing effective date. And are there any questions or comments from the commission on this item?
I have a question. Who's representing? My question is, office transition to mixed use, and when I was looking at the backup, there's actually no residential in this. Am I correct? Okay. So would you be okay to actually put in there, there won't be no residential?
We can do that.
Okay.
Stacy, I think that, you know, the idea was zoning is permissive in the state of Florida. So if you don't say you can do something, you can't do it by law. So we don't do that with PDs, just because it would be, it would make the PD 10 times as long. in the state of Florida. So if you don't say you can do something, you can't do it by law. So we don't do that with PDs just because it would be,
Well, it can be.
It would make the PD 10 times as long.
Okay, it can be added?
I think we can add it.
Okay. And I made sure it can be added, it can be added. So I would like it added, there will be no residential because you don't have anything on page 65, 659 that says you're going to do any residential.
Right.
And it will just make my residents happy to see this as well.
So I just wanted to say procedurally, and maybe, Tony, this is to you. Hopefully, that doesn't have to restart us back to the planning ordinance.
No.
I just want to make sure, in my view, it wouldn't. So we're adding, we're taking things away, not adding them. If we're adding, I think we have to go back.
Rob, again, that's something I'm not aware of. I hadn't had to think on that for the last 15 years.
Sorry, Tony.
But I do have, I think, I believe David's still here, and I know he regularly works with the planning board as well as.
We're gonna, we're gonna say, okay, do it. I think we're good.
Wait, I'm gonna speak up for a minute because Mr. Jackson, Mr. Feacher and Bingrose was in there. And Bingrose said it can be done, and he knew I was gonna present this.
Okay, you already talked to me.
So, yeah, it can be done.
Done.
Okay.
Sorry, Tony.
And I would be happy for that as well because I was just about to say something because we soon enough, soon enough have to have a conversation about the growth over in LPGA and Strickland Range and that area. We've got to, as a commission, sit down and talk about smarter growth. The area is now, it's like we're packing in there like sardines now. And it's just packing it on and packing it on, and it's every single day. And I would definitely like to have a conversation about that moving forward with the commission. But I'm gonna support this, this particular ordinance. But I do want you to know that I'm not gonna be supporting as much in the very near future until we talk about the growth over in that area.
So for what it's worth, and we'll be back with a public hearing, I think, in a couple of weeks. But I will say that this is sort of the opposite of what you guys are worried about, which is more people, we're actually making it so that people don't necessarily have to get in their car to go shopping or go to the barber shop. They can walk there, ride their bicycles. Lot of sidewalks in this area, and that's the reason why my client bought this property, seeing what was going on in terms of all the residential growth. So I think this is smart growth. This is internalizing the trip capture.
And this is just in addition to what you were saying.
Gotcha.
As to why I would like for that to be added in as well for non-residential.
Two thumbs up.
All right, thank you, Kevin.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to Item 10B. Growth Management and Planning Department, First Amendment to Reserve Strickland Plan District PD Agreement. It's an introduction of ordinance on first reading and ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone 2.3 acres of property, generally located southeast of the intersection of Strickland Range Road and Clyde Morris Boulevard from PDG to PDG, approving the First Amendment to the Reserve at Strickland Plan District Agreement to allow additional commercial uses and revise the development criteria. Authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute the First Amendment and providing effective date. And are there any questions or comments from the commission?
No. No questions, no comments.
The public hearing and final action will be on January 22nd, 2025.
Oh, okay, that's it?
And that was my final item.
Wow. Okay, we'll hear from the commission. And I guess we start tonight with Commissioner May.
Really nice to be back, everybody. I'm looking forward to productive here. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Commissioner Kent, too?
I just want to say Happy New Year, and I actually want to rave about code enforcement in Daytona Beach PD. I have lived over off the Beville area for over 30 years, Pelican Bay and Pine Lakes. And most of us over there, we always go to Walmart in Port Orange because it's always dirty at the one on Beville Road. All the homeless, everybody that hangs out there, it's just not a safe place to usually go. And my residents have been noticing as well. Beville Road is looking amazing. And when you go online and you ask about Walmart, the worst Walmart in Volusia County, it's ours in Daytona. Let me tell you, it looks amazing. Code and Daytona Beach PD has been all over that. They have done so trimming. So if you guys get a chance to go over there, all down Beville Road, from Clyde Morris to Walmart to Nova Road, it's the best it's ever, ever looked.
Great.
So I am like, I keep raving about it.
That's good, I like that. All right, anything else?
That's it, Happy New Year.
Commissioner Henry?
Happy New Year to everyone, and just a couple of things tonight. And the first thing is that I would just like to talk to my fellow commissioners up here. And I want you to know that we're in a very divisive time right now. Everything is divisive. And one thing that I'm very proud of this commission for is that we have worked hard to be a nonpartisan commission. Each and every one of you up here, you have worked hard. I think that, for the most part, each of you are working hard to do what you think is best for all of your residents, no matter where they stand, whether they're red, whether they're blue, or whether they're independent. And that's what makes this commission special. It makes this commission very special. We may not always, we may not always agree. A lot of times, we disagree. Sometimes, we agree, but don't agree on how we should get there. But we try hard to do what's right for our citizens. And I want you to know that people are going to try and get in your ear because they're gonna want you to be a divided commission. They're gonna want to say, these are the things you should be doing for your constituents. You know your constituents, you live next door to them every day. You walk in the neighborhood and you see them every single day. You talk to them when you're riding your bicycle or you're going out for a walk, or you're in your Walmart, your local store. You know those people. So they've told you what they needed in their communities. So people who don't live in your community are gonna come and they're gonna try and say, this is what your community needs. But you know better what your community needs. And each one of our communities is totally different. We need totally different things in all of our community. Your community may need sidewalks. Your community may, for the most part, need more policing. And so we all know what our communities need. And so for outsiders to come and tell us, this is what you should be doing or this is what your community should have, it's wrong. It's a no. It's a no-go for me. And I hope that it's a no-go for each and every one of you. And I hope that each and every one of you will continue to want to work together to do the very best for our citizens in the city of Daytona Beach, not for people on the outside who have political gain. And if you ask me, the city of Daytona Beach, when we pay, we're paying our fair share. And most of the time, we're getting nothing in return. I talked about it the other week. We're getting nothing in return. We're paying our taxes. And we're not getting anything back. And I said to someone the other day, it's like a Ponzi scheme where they tell you, everybody, you come, everybody bring your money, and we'll all put it together. And then each one of us can get something done in our area and in a project done. And we put in a whole heaping helping lot. We put in the most. And year after year after year after year after year, we're told, no, there's nothing in the pot for you. No, there's nothing in the pot for you this year. Try again next year. There's nothing in the pot this year, try again next year. And you can tell me anything you want to tell me. Oh, it's because we're going through an audit. I don't care what kind of audit I'm going through. And I know you wouldn't care what kind of audit you're going through. If you went in your bank account at First Bank USA and took out $100 million and gave it to somebody, and they gave you nothing in return, but mouth and lip service, you'd be upset, too. You'd be angry, too. But here we are, just making the best with what we have. We're making the best with what we have, even though the naysayers say, hey, Daytona is this, Daytona is that. Daytona is still doing the very best. We're still growing. We're still winning. We're still succeeding, even when they give us nothing. Even when we give them $100 million, they give us nothing in return except lip service. We're still winning. And so I just want to say tonight that I want us to continue to work together. We don't always have to agree. But we can all agree that we're doing what we think is the best thing for our communities. And I want everybody to have a wonderful, prosperous, and blessed New Year. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Well said.
Preach, preacher.
Well, when we met last, first of all, good evening, everyone. When we met last, I didn't have anything to share with you regarding the children's Christmas party, but staff has queued something up just to kind of show you how we celebrate the children in our community, our future. If you, go ahead, please. Got any music to go with it? Okay. We wish you a Merry Christmas. This is the Divine Nine Sororities and Fraternity staff members here with our children. This is a partnership with the Torotugas of the Jackie Robinson Stadium. And aren't you proud of what's happening with that for us? Putting us on the map? So they're great partners, and they open up their doors and allow our children to play. Some of these kids have never been to this park, and it gives them an opportunity to know about the park. And we're also sharing about Jackie. And as you can see, the volunteers are there, and they are assisting with helping the young people. Like Sheldon and Shelby, that's Sheldon right there. He's cute. Line dancing, games were played, blowups were there. They got chocolate and hot dogs and hamburgers and, and train rides. And they were all just having a great time. That's Joseph and his daughter. And it was a fun time by all. It was the second one that we hosted. That's Jim Jaworski, the president of the Torotugas. His wife, her mom and dad are over the cocoa station. And Katie, our events planner. And just a whole family, a Santa. They made me do that. I wouldn't sit in his lap, I was sitting next to him. Aren't they cute with their pajamas on? And they, you know, it's just nice to let children be children as long as they can be children. Because as I look around this audience, as soon as we get grown, you're grown forever. Okay, bills are forever. But to let, to let kids be kids, and Daytona did that once again. Look at there. And Santa's one of our firemen, and he's volunteered for the past two or three years for us, even for the Santa run. And they're just having a good old time, all ages from 3 to 11. And they also received books, they were coloring, they had face painting. And it was just a grand old time. We had to push some of those children. The bikes were bigger than them. Tug of war, mhm. And to see them just run in the outfield and just, they were making up their own games. Now, we had plenty of stuff for them to do. But they were making up their own games and just playing and playing tag with each other and everything. It was really a nice night. Once again, Daytona Beach serving its children in the community. Line dancing with Tweety. Look at this family. We lost the elf that night. Somebody left with the elf, you know, find our elf. And I saw the elf, but I didn't know that was the elf. You know, we're supposed to take a picture of the elf. I don't know what I was looking for, but it was just a little elf on the fence. We had to find the elf thing. All right, thank you, thank you, Xavier. I want to encourage our citizens. We do so much advertising to let you know what's going on in our city. We put it in your water bill, we have the mayor's, I'm sorry, the manager's report that comes out. We have a website for you. Our, our public relations staff does an awful lot. We post banners, we now have those electronic signs all around the city. You cannot say you don't know what's happening in Daytona Beach. If you don't know, that's because you're not trying to know because we try to make sure that you know. So tonight, I want to share with you that the Midtown Concert Series, we're starting it earlier this year because, you know, we always run into rain as it progresses into the hurricane season in June. So we're actually starting it this year on, wait a minute, wait a minute, got it. On January 25th. We're gonna have our first concert in the park, and I want everyone to come out to Daisy Stocking and enjoy that. But this weekend, last night, we kicked off the Mayor's, Mayor's Challenge, Mayor's Fitness Challenge, the 10th year that the mayor has sponsored his fitness challenge. Come on, that's, come on. Some cities don't even have one, okay? And I think last night, Mayor, did they say 106? 140? 165 citizens are registered for the Mayor's Fitness Challenge. It's a 10-week challenge, and it's based on who loses the highest percentage of weight, not the highest amount of weight because, you know, men, they lose quicker than we do girls. So we had to go by percentage to be fair. But next week, when we start our first activity, which is gonna be line dancing, the mayor has given us permission to move it to Daisy Stocking Park to accompany the MLK Community Health Resource Fair that the city is sponsoring. And there are going to be a plethora of services there for you to come and learn about your health. We have the Mayo Clinic coming down from Jacksonville. We've got the, tell you who all is coming. The Department of, the Health Department is coming with a plethora of different services. It's sponsored by, of course, our city, the members of Kappa Alpha Psi and the National Panellody Council. It's gonna be happening from 9 to 1 this Saturday at Daisy Stocking. Now, the Mayor's Challenge is 8:30, 9:30. So if you want to come and shake your tail feather and just kind of get a taste of what that's like, they're still also accepting registrations on Saturday morning as well. But come on out, you all, and participate in this. You know, we all talk about how we're gonna get healthy for the new year, but this is an opportunity to do it and to do it with 165 other people and be encouraged and get some great prizes, too. They give out great stuff. They gave out about six things last night. And if it rains, thank you, Mr. Manager, we do have a Plan B. If it rains, we're taking it to the Cherry Center, the old pal, if you're old school, in the Midtown Center. But it's the Midtown Complex with the Charles and Jerry Cherry Educational Center there, all right? I hope to see each and every one of you there. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Nice and nice. Commissioner Parrish?
Just want to wish everyone a Happy New Year. And I don't know how, I totally forgot to mention this at the last meeting, but one of my neighborhoods, they have a neighborhood watch meeting once a quarter. And there were a lot of complaints about activities going on in one of the areas. So I received a phone call from the chief of police, and he asked me if I wanted to come with him on, to serve a search warrant. And I was interested to see how it all works. And I just want to say how professional everybody was. It was so organized, animal control was there. It was just really something to see in action, how our police department works and how courteous and professional they are in situations like this. And I just want residents to know, your messages to us don't go unheard. Maybe they don't happen as quickly as you like, but there are processes and procedures that need to be done. But I just want to let you know that our PD is working very hard. And unfortunately, there's a lot of things going on that I know Tammy Ward, our victim advocate,[1656.08] there's a lot of things going on that, I know Tammy Ward, our victim advocate, could even confirm, there is a lot of things going on in the city. So just please be patient, but please let us also know what's happening so we could let PD know or see where we could help as well. So I just want to thank the chief and the team for letting me be present for that. Also, code enforcement, I want to thank Denzel for Bevel Road Walmart. We've been working closely to get it cleaned up, so I'm glad that it's being noticed. And also, I thank the fire department. They've been very busy lately, I know with the cold weather, just please be careful with space heaters and everything. Now, we also have a new restaurant that, it's a local restaurant that came into town from South Daytona. They are Monkey Morning Cafe, and they're located at 1435 South Ridgewood. So if we could welcome them, that whole little area is, it's getting cleaned up. We have a lot of other local restaurants. We have the Better Jerk Jamaican Restaurant. They're open for lunch and dinner, and Euphoria Bar and Grill. So if you guys could just, they're investing a lot in that area where we need more commercials. So if you could go and support them, I'd really appreciate it. And I guess that's it. And I'll be at the Daisy Stocking Mayor's Fitness Challenge Saturday.
All right. Commissioner Strick?
Mayor, Happy New Year, everybody. Welcome for tonight's meeting. I'd like to say that the Main Street Merchants Association, as well as Al Smith and his production company, put on a fancy, well-attended New Year's Eve over on Main Street. The crowd was excellent. We had kids, we had bounce houses for the kids over there. It was, it was a good time, it was had by all. The new restaurant over there, 35 Bistro, if you haven't eaten there, the food's excellent. That draws like quite a different crowd than what the rest of the businesses there are attracting. As we continue to try to improve Main Street. I want to second what Commissioner Henry said. We've been getting the short end of the stick on redistribution of sales tax for years. We have the tourist area, we attract tourists, we have special events, we collect the sales tax, send it to the state, and Daytona gets the majority of it because they have more population. That really, really does need to change. It'd be very helpful for us going forward if we could get some help from, from some of our representatives in Tallahassee to change the way that works. I don't know that it'll happen, but I think it needs to. Other than that, good night, everybody.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Commissioner Reed, for highlighting the Mayor's Fitness Challenge, which Katie Presswood and Pam Goodman and the entire city staff is off to a great start. Of course, we miss Ms. Goodman, but they are doing a great job getting us excited about this year. Unfortunately, will not be there this Saturday because I have to attend a funeral. But I am off to a good start as it relates to my challenge. I want to highlight a part of what we do with the Mayor's Fitness Challenge is that we encourage participants to set goals and then pursue those goals with great enthusiasm and support. Find themselves an accountability partner. For me, it's the lady that I sleep with and have been married to. She's my accountability partner and the person who really helped me when we decided to do the fitness challenge. And she created a mantra that we call the Winner's Mantra, and that we try to execute, you know, monitor your water. We intermittently fast. We find some things that we're going to say no to. For us, right now, we're in a 30-day challenge of trying to limit our sugar to very little or as much as close to nothing. You know, processed sugar, we're not eating. Then nutrition, choose things that we know are good. We know the routine. We all know what, what we should and should not be eating, staying away from the fried and, you know, consuming our vegetables and fruit. Then we, of course, the fitness challenge is about exercise. So that, that E, and that's what we do for these 10 weeks. We're exposing residents to different spots that you can exercise or that you can come together as a group. I'm very excited about the fact that our residents will be able to see the masterful job that we've done at the Daisy Stocking, and they'll be able to be exposed to that as a venue. And then the final letter is R, and that's for rest. You know, you, we sometimes forget about how important it is to get proper amounts of sleep. And for me, a part of that sleeping is also infusing some, some mental health, where we do some meditating or some things where we try to reflect and just take some time for ourselves. So that's a mantra that we try and encourage. And then for the 10 weeks, typically, we ask people during the 10 weeks to take something away, you know, each week, to do something better in their diet. And so I encourage residents, whether you're participating or not, to partake in the Winner's Mantra for the next 10 weeks, because a healthy community is, is a metric that we, we really want to pay attention to. As a city, we've done a great job with our parks over the last 10, 15 years of enhancing and improving them. And one of the great signs of a healthy community is how close you live to a park. You know, people who live within a walking distance of a park are said to be a lot healthier than those who do not. And we want to eliminate that old metric that says that where the zip code that you live in determines how long you live. And that is very often said, and we know that we have one of the poorest zip codes in the state of Florida, 3211 four zip code. As we continue to aspire to be a great community, we want to eliminate that as a, as a, as a part of our demographics. Last night was the first game for the basketball season, and I am coaching again. Basketball is a marquee youth sport in the city of Daytona Beach, where we have several hundred young kids coming together to compete. Talking last night and talking with the manager, we've got to find a way to lengthen the schedule. But overall, we were off to a, a good, good week, and seeing all the families come out and have wholesome activities is important. You all pray for your mayor that he doesn't become that crazy sideline coach. Remember that he's coaching recreation and not high school or college. Sometimes I sort of get a little overly competitive. But it's, it's just sort of the way I'm wired to compete. But nonetheless, we're off to a good start. Like to wish each of you a Happy New Year, and let's continue to do the things that we can do individually and collectively to make Daytona Beach the great American destination that we know that it is. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Happy New Year to everyone. I know that I will be hearing the mayor's wife's voice in my house about 5:45 during the Mayor's Fitness Challenge, because my wife will get on the teams at 5:45 to exercise. And I don't know, the first time I heard her, I thought she was actually in my house. I called the mayor and asked if he'd throw her out, but, but, but so she does a good program, so I'm excited about the Mayor's Fitness Challenge. I'll stand beside Monica and not Commissioner Reed. Commissioner Reed takes more breaks than Commissioner Parrish does, so I'll, I'll exercise.
You gotta throw some shade.
With, with, I'm just being honest. And the mayor is going to get kicked out. I had to tell him yesterday at the game to sit down twice. When you were beating a team by 30, it was no need for you to still be standing up on the sideline. So I, it was 30 points, and he was not paying me any attention. I couldn't get to the whistle fast enough, but yeah. But he is a real coach, and I, I don't know, but he, he has a good team, and, but he, he is teaching them fundamentals the entire game. It doesn't matter if, if you're down by five or up by 20, you are going to do fundamentals the entire game, and I'm going, they're kids, but, but good. So it is a great program, and I know that staff is going to do that. I, I do appreciate seeing the amount of individuals at the, the YSG from all over our city coming to play basketball and their parents there as well. So as we discussed earlier about in reference to the Bike Week Master Plan, we're going to send out some dates to coordinate a community meeting for the Bike Week Master Plan. It will, we're either going to be at a church on B-side or at the Peabody. We'll put dates out, and then we'll have a workshop for you all and bring that information back to you for the Bike Week Master Plan guideline changes. Also, Monday night is a CRA workshop. Those big books are things that they gave of all of the projects that they've been working on for the many years that the CRA has been together. So you can take that book, many, many of the items in that book as well, did know different projects that have been done throughout the state of Florida. So you can know the type of projects other communities have done and what we're doing. It also has the amount of funds that have been allocated and spent over the timeframe of the CRA. So it's a very good thorough book that Mr. Thomas and his team have put together in the workshop. We're hoping will last about an hour and an hour and a half, and there will be food provided, Mr. Thomas advised, on Monday. And it starts at what time? 6 o'clock and 1:49. And so those are the two items that I needed to, to speak with you all about. And we will be bringing up also, the, the trust fund will be coming back to you all soon for the Housing Trust Fund. We've come up with a decision from staff for what we will be providing from, from a funding mechanism with the developers, and we'll be bringing that back to you either the next commission meeting or the first meeting in February. We're going to have the consulting group, Florida, what was it, Florida Housing Corp., who did the study, will be all here to do the presentation as well. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Attorney?
Just want to wish everyone a happy and blessed New Year.
All right. While we were...
I forgot, you know, the mayor was here from Warren Beach. Josh Leslie.
Well, welcome. You, you want to come up and greet us, Mayor?
Sure.
Just give us a quick greeting and introduce yourself to Daytona Beach. We're happy and excited to be partners with you.
I am as well. Well, hello, everyone. It's good to meet some of you. Jason Leslie, Mayor of Warren Beach. And great meeting, by the way. One of the things I like to do is go to different cities in Volusia County and go to the commission meetings, and it's, it's great how we all kind of do things a little differently, but it works. And so this was a great meeting, and it's great to be here. I also saw that I was on the agenda tonight to serve on the homeless first step shelter. Looking forward to that, so thank you very much for considering me. But what I did today was I dropped, you have two papers I left on your diastere. See here. And one is, it says 100% club, and one will say missing person. And so I'll kind of just get into about the missing person here, and that's Amy Lynn Bradley. I actually know her family. She's been missing since 1998. She was on a cruise ship, and she never came back on the cruise ship. And so her family suspects that she's being human trafficked. And I've known her family for quite a long time, long before I was doing what I'm doing now. And January is Human Trafficking Awareness Month. I just read a proclamation last night. I saw you read your proclamation before. And so when I was in the League of Cities Legislative Conference, one of the things that went on in one of the meetings was a city in Florida is known as the 100% Club. And when they talked more about what the 100% Club is, is Ashley Moody's office, who's a big advocate for human trafficking, offers an online course for one hour, which is free, for people to understand what human trafficking is. And, and I think it was a really awesome idea. And so the city of Port St. Lucie, actually, was the first city in Florida being 100% Club, where every employee in the city did the hour training, and they got a certificate when they're done as being 100% Club. So I, at the meeting last night, I read my proclamation, I brought this to the city manager, and I said, you know, I want to be in 100% Club. This is something that's really important. This is something that does go on, and, you know, and you can't report something if you don't know what to report and what to say. So just, you know, investing an hour of, you know, your employees' time in a city to be able to identify like something like this could help maybe bring people like Amy Lynn Bradley home.
Yeah.
So I really would appreciate if you want to participate in this program. My goal is to be the first county in Florida where every city is in 100% Club. So I hope you can consider that. And other than that, I appreciate your time tonight, and I'll be back again soon to stop by and say hello.
All right. Thank you, and thank you for partnering with us on First Step. Looking forward to serving with you.
Yes, I understand. Thank you, Mayor.
Also, Mayor, the actual date for the workshop is 5:00 PM, not 6:00 PM.
5:00 PM. That's early. At the same time as the First Step Shelter meeting, so I, I will be here. Yeah, it's okay, I'll be here. All right. Do we have any other comments from any commissions? All right, at this time, we will hear from the citizens of Daytona Beach.
During this time, citizens are allowed three minutes to speak on any topic. And our first speaker is Zoltan Korekis, and on deck is John Nicholson.
Hello, everyone. My name is Zoltan, and I live on 1201 Margina Avenue in Fairway Estates. And I would like to just propose a suggestion to the county, to the city. I walk every morning at Samuel Butts Park, and I saw that the city has built a while back a retention pond, a lake, with the pumps and everything to alleviate the flooding that's happening in that area. Now, the past four years that I lived in Fairway Estates, I have to tell you that the past two years, I had two floodings. And if this continues, I don't know what's going to happen. Either we move or I, I was thinking to do the same thing, since we have the golf course, the Daytona Beach Golf Course is adjacent to Fairway Estates. Maybe somebody, if there is space, to make a lake or a bigger lake and pumps and somebody who's specialized in that to help us alleviate this, this problem. I know the city is looking into this with a lot of, there is a lot of focus placed on this, but I thought I'd just bring this up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Korekis.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is William Bitoff.
John Nicholson, 413 North Grand River Avenue. Mr. City Manager, are you coaching this year?
No, I'm not coaching because I'm afraid that the mayor will beat me, and I'm going to go to the grave saying I at least beat him one game.
There we go. Otherwise, you'll be on the sidelines controlling his up and down and up and down and, yeah, okay.
I'm going to keep my championship.
Okey-dokey. Secondly, on the sales tax, yes, we lose money, about $100 million a year in sales tax. So since I've been in Daytona Beach, we've only lost about $5 billion to other cities. But we also lose in our school tax. Because we are next to an ocean, the state decides to withhold about $10 to $14 million a year from our students. We desperately need that money. So if you're going to ask for money, please also ask for our schools as well. Secondly, during New Year's Eve, I walked, starting at nine, Seabreeze, then I walked A1A, walked Main Street, walked the boardwalk to see what was going on. It is by far the worst condition these streets are in. Graffiti, trash, dead plants, palms. We need to work on the appearance, because that's where our money comes from. When they were doing the half penny sales tax, we were projected to bring in about 40 to 42% of all the money for the sales tax for the half penny would come from Daytona Beach, and they would give us, instead of $42 million, $3 million as our fair share. That's the way it's balanced. The county gets most of the money. The city raises the funds, the county gets the funds. We get very little. So the net is correct. You really need to look at all of the funding and where the money's going, how much we raise and how much we get back. Remember Volusia Forever, we don't get back a penny. So we donated $19 million to the other cities. It's nice that we don't need the money. With the flooding, I'm asking you to think about since we can't go down, with the sea rising, our water under our community is rising as well, so we can't go down as far. So if we can't go down, I'm suggesting that we go up. I saw a book with tanks in New York where they stored water. I'm thinking that we could do that. For all of the, we could put a tank on a city block on Orange Avenue, and would, I think about almost 2 million cubic feet of water could be stored until the ocean went down, and then we could pump it back out. That's our problem. We can't pump it out of the ocean because it's too high, and our outfalls are below the level. So I'm asking us to think about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
John, I will say that I want to know if you talked with Commissioner Parrish, because she has been discussing that particular idea with Assistant City Manager Hall.
Our next speaker, William Bitoff, and on deck is Patricia Santa Pedro.
My name is William Bitoff Alivit. Oh, sorry, my name is William Bitoff Alivit, 402 East International Speedway Boulevard in Daytona Beach. One about the human trafficking would hit me for years. I'll probably get stoned by somebody when I leave when I mention this, but, you know, I used to be in the adult club business years ago, and I've worked in places like Atlanta and other places where they actually, the girls get licensed with the city to work in the city. As a criminal, and I have a master's degree in criminal justice, mostly you don't know that, I graduated from Columbia University. So, and I've worked in security for over 30 years, you know, worldwide. What would be a good thing is if we licensed, made these girls get licensed, it would generate money for the city, but it'd also make it harder for criminals to come here on, you know, to come here and work in the strip club, because it's, there's no trace of them at all working in our community. It's something to think about, study what they did in Atlanta. Second issue is... Second issue is on three, on Grandview Avenue, South Grandview Avenue, there's just a lot of sidewalks messed up, people parking everywhere, blocking entrances and things like that. I'm going to work on fixing some problems along with the city, but I kind of need the guidance of you all and this, my commissioners and my mayor and my city manager and Ken Strickland, which has helped me a lot, guided me to do, you know, just be a better, better citizen, I would say. And the third thing I would think about is, I know this is a hard ask because I love and respect you particularly, I know that, is in the middle of International Speedway to see if sometimes, maybe, maybe the best thing is not being part of the Master Bike Week Master Plan, but we have to figure out something because it's a really blighted area. I've been trying to, I'm trying to create something and make it a bingo place and do some different things. Well, for 50 years, you know, it's been, it's been an adult club. It's very difficult to change that. So what I was trying to do is maybe implore and ask to maybe try to be part of the Master Plan and Bike Week. If that's not, if that's a reach, it's not a problem, but I would like to come to some resolution with the guidance of my commissioners and you, Mr. Mayor. I thank you all, and I wanted to thank Commissioner Henry for bringing that up because, you know, I do feel that this commission's fair, and I do feel and thank each one of you because you dedicate your time to look after us. And I, I feel greatly indebted to the city, to leadership, and I love and respect each one of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Patricia Santa Pedro, and on deck is Thomas Russell.
Good evening. I'm Patty Santa Padre, and I live at 215 Williams Ave, right here in Daytona Beach. I'm a member of faith and a member of our Lady of Lords, and I'm here tonight just to remind you all to continue to work to get our funding source for our new Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I know personally how hard it is for our young people in our city to find safe and affordable housing. My daughter Lauren and her three young children were living in South Daytona before, and then the flood came, which forced them, they don't, they can't live there anymore. The house is unlivable. So they had to find something to rent, and they owned, they owned that house. So the best she could find for a three bedroom for her children started at, started at 2100, and it wasn't like it was a mansion or anything, trust me. She's a preschool teacher. She teaches two-year-olds, and she's on a salary, the preschool teacher teaches two-year-olds. So she worries, you know, every month, how she, how is she going to make that? So I know that we just met with the Florida Housing Coalition, sorry, and they assured us that the commercial linkage fees of at least $5 to $7 per square foot is the best possible way to solve this affordable housing problem. So I did hear that you said that you'll be, we'll be meeting with them next month. I thought that we were going to be meeting with the Florida, speaking about affordable housing at this meeting, but that's okay. I just want to let you know that we'll be praying for all your strength and all your leadership as you strive to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Happy New Year to all of you.
Happy New Year.
Our next speaker is Thomas Russell, and on deck is Frederick Brown.
All right, Thomas Russell, 603 North Beach Street, the original North Beach Street. First of all, I want to explain what happened in my forehead. I was coming in the back there. Some guy said, what are you going to speak about? I said, the CRA on Blue Road. He popped me on the top of the head. Says, I don't want to hear that anymore. And then he left. Mr. Fletcher and Commissioner Strickland were getting together with me and Mr. Thomas and attempting to explain to me the expenditures of the CRA. They did try very hard. Mr. Thomas is in the process, I hope, of getting me some more information, and I understand you guys have a folder. Can I get one of them? Can I go to that workshop?
Yeah, it's open.
It's open?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know it was open. I want to make a point to be there, free food too. All right.
Information.
Oh, gee. All right. In any event, my big concern is this Blue Road CRA. I really mean it. And it's not taking money from somebody else to put it in there. It's what happened to the money. All right? Follow the money. Who got it? What did they do for it? Or was it just wiped out to some invisible account over here and something that would fly and get used alternatively for something else? In 2000, let's see, what was it? 2000, in 2000, there was, according to my information, the Blue, oh, shoot, I always get up here and don't have it, but there was approximately $1.4 million in this account. Right? And each year after, another $200,000 plus goes into the account. So I'm just saying, okay, there are some expenses. $2 million? Is this the CIA that they don't have to explain what they spend the money on? I'm asking you guys that. You approve a budget, and when the budget is approved, does anybody look at where the money went? And I hope you all have a good new year, and I appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Frederick Brown, and our final speaker is Sylvester Peterson.
Frederick Brown, 1508 Crescent Ridge. Commissioner Henry certainly inspired me this evening with a passioned speech about what's best for Daytona Beach. And that's why I've spent a lot of my time here, many hundreds of hours, in thinking about what's best for Daytona Beach. I'll start off with a positive note. Mayor's Fitness Challenge is good for Daytona Beach. I want to thank you, Mayor, for continuing that. This is the 10th year now, and I know Commissioner May also contributed to it as well as a number of business. Hopefully, there'll be more next year for our 11th. But what is good with, for Daytona Beach, I got to agree with Commissioner Ken Strickland, it would be good to get our tax distribution money. We needed to do a pretty concerted effort on making sure that we get our fair share because without a doubt, the beach at Daytona is the economic driver for Volusia County. Now, West Volusia and Deltona may not admit that, but it's true. People came here, reason I first came here in 64 was Daytona Beach, world's most famous beach. NASCAR racing came, Daytona Beach, because of the beach. Beach is real important, and it would be nice if we got some of our fair share for taking care of it. I realize it's a county versus city thing, but we need to have the city put more pressure to, on this county, state, and federal to get projects such as the Dunes at Cat Wake, which I've talked endlessly, which by the way, is, if you actually looked at the information I provided with you last year, is tanks to hold floodwater to pump it out when the tide goes down. That seemed to got missed, but that would be a great way to save Daytona Beach. It also would make us the most beautiful, as well as the most famous beach. Excessive development in the swamp, previous swamp areas with outdated civil engineering data, not good for Daytona Beach. Seems to get repetitively approved by outsiders. We talked about what outsiders that come in and want to do developments. They seem to want to build over top of and remove all the swamp and the growth under structure that absorbs the flooding. But 7-0, we seem to pass it almost every time. Was a $540,000 roof on a $99,000 structure on basin, was that good for Daytona Beach? I don't think so. I think we could have more wisely spent that. The neglect of MMV Boulevard, is that good for Daytona Beach? No, that should be the most beautiful street in Daytona Beach. And one of our major city partners, the major insurance company at the end, has one of the worst sections of the road. It's terrible. Why aren't they held to task? Also, the Green Initiative, that is good for Daytona Beach. When we all met on a charter review, we agreed we needed that. It needs to move forward. Thank you.
Your time's up. Our final speaker is Sylvester Peterson.
Hello, hello, how you doing? My name's Sylvester Peterson, 408 Fremont Avenue. Back again, man, talking about this report. I know he said he was going to do it, he was going to, the chief of police came out, said he was going to correct it and everything, and they made an attempt, but for some reason, they don't want to, they don't want to put everything in the report like it's supposed to be, the evidence and everything. And then about the witness, they're telling me that a witness is not needed in a traffic accident. Okay, that's not what the law say, but then they add another witness in. I don't know who he's speaking for or whatever, but after they told me that, he's, he's, he's not down for a witness. The other reports, he wasn't a witness. Now he's a witness. So what it looking, if that's, that's, that's by it, that's precedent. You telling me one thing, but then you allowing a witness here, over here, but you telling me Mrs. Mitchell statement, you know, she's, her statement is irrelevant. I don't get it. And then they won't add the pictures in the report? Known pictures, you know, they're out there. I took them over to the, to the station. Just don't, I don't know. I'm still, I still have the same problem. After he, he said he was going to correct it, everybody went home for the holidays and left it up to him. I mean, I'm still standing up here talking about it again. It's ridiculous. And I still need some, you know, things like piecemealing it. You done did four reports. Four? What the problem? It's just, it's, all you doing is writing a report. Well, you ain't got nothing to do with it. You just showed up to do the report, that's it. They acting like it's personal, like, no, you can't, no, we can't do that. Just write it up like it, like, like it goes. But when you start that, that you showing, you can't do that. And I'm just asking for the report to be did by law, that's it. I'm not asking you to do me no favor. That's what the law say. That's it, that's it. You not do me no, don't look at, you ain't doing me no favor. Because this stuff you should have did the first time. It's ridiculous, man. You got to know how to write a report. You out there doing traffic duty, you got to know how to write a report. And that's all I'm going to say on that. I need to speak to somebody about it. Some gentleman, well, I'm out, out of time. But can I speak to you afterwards?
This meeting is adjourned. I'll talk with you.
Okay. Thank you.
You know what, I can talk.